The Chair will call the Committee of the Whole for the Tuesday, May 9th, 2023 to order. If you'll please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and welcome. Mr. Clerk, if you'll call the roll.
Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Rockford.
Here.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderwoman Notariano.
Here.
Alderman Carlson.
Here.
Alderwoman Connolly.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, a quorum is present.
The Chair will entertain a motion to allow Alderwoman Connolly to participate via phone.
Somo.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Okay, before we get started this evening, I did want to say a couple of things. First of all, everybody, welcome. I especially wanted to welcome our new Mayor, Ms. DeBusher, who's in the crowd this evening. Wanted to welcome our new Treasurer, Colleen Redpath-Fager. I wanted to welcome Larry Rockford in Ward Four. I wanted to welcome Jennifer Nutriano in Ward Six, and Brad Carlson in Ward Seven. And if I missed anybody, I apologize. And before we get started on actual business tonight, I thought it would be helpful if we have any of the new directors that are here presently tonight, if you don't mind coming up to the podium. Mr. Ron can do it from his chair and just introduce yourself, so we can see who you are and say hello.
Don't all go at once.
Come on, don't be shy. This won't be the last time you're called up to the podium.
Hi, Mike Disco, Chief of Staff, and I wanted to get up here for Ethan because he has such a credential on everything that I was embarrassed to be standing up here after him, so, pleasure to be here.
Welcome, Mike.
Welcome, Mike.
Many of you already know me, I'm Ed Canny.
Congratulations.
But for the new members, I served as the City Fire Marshal before Monday, and I'm becoming the new Chief of the Fire Department. So, my phone is always available for calls. You feel welcome to call me at any point in time. Congratulations to the new alderpersons, and look forward to working with you all.
Thank you, Chief.
Good evening, everyone, to everyone I know and everyone that I don't know. My name is Ethan Posey. I'm the new Director of Community Relations here for the city. Don't let Mike flatter me that much. I am pleased to serve the community and serve our cities at the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Hi, I'm Ramona Metzger, and I am the Director of the Office of Budget Management. I will be joining you in the horseshoe.
Well, congratulations.
Great.
Thank you.
I hope you let us spend some money.
There's some money budgeted.
And save a little bit, too.
Point of information, Mr. Chair.
You forgot one person.
Alderman.
At the conclusion of this, can we ask, I know we have many new directors, and I just would like some contact information so we can continue the business of the city.
Excellent idea. Mr. Ron, you want to say hello as well?
My name is Steve Ron. I'm the Acting Corporation Counsel. My day job is doing litigation for the city, but I will be serving in this capacity until a permanent Corporation Counsel can be installed.
Thank you. Thanks for stepping up. Anyone else? Okay. Hearing none. Moving right along, approval of the Tuesday, April 25th, 2023, committee meeting minutes. Is there a motion?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Treasurer's report. Treasurer, welcome.
Thank you, Chair Donlin. Treasurer's report for the Corporate Fund for the month of April. The beginning balance is $67,387,204. We took in total receipts of $9,815,543. We had total disbursements in the month of April totaling $10,146,720, which left the Corporate Fund ending balance in the month of April at $67,56,027. The ending general fund balance includes $21,599,47, which is the April ending balance of the ARPA money. Thank you, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Treasurer. Is there a motion to accept the Treasurer's report as submitted?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Ordinances tabled or remaining, committee. Mr. Clerk.
Thank you. 2022-384, 2022-463, 2023-001, 2023-055, 2023-128, 2023-173, 2023-175.
Does anybody wish to act upon any of these ordinances? Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, I haven't heard from Public Works. I was trying to clean some of these up. On 384, Nate, can we, you want to keep that? Okay. But I'd like to make a motion. We withdraw 463, 2023-001, 2023-055, 2023-128.
There's a motion to withdraw those ordinances. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it. Anybody else wish to act on the others? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Clerk, ordinances for committee consideration. CWLP.
2023-184, an ordinance accepting and authorizing the execution of an additional two-year extension to Proposal Number UE 18-12 with Ozinga Semat Incorporated for purchase removal and beneficial use of fly ash from Dolman IV for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second. Motion in a second for consent. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
2023-185, an ordinance accepting the bid and authorizing execution of contract UW 23-12-87-24-inch ductile iron pipe with core and main LP in an amount not to exceed $90,425 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
Motion in a second for consent. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
2023-186, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing the execution of contract UE 23-02-106 Underground Electrical Components, two years with Wesco and Exor Incorporated, Brownstown Electrical Supply Company, Utility Supply and Construction Company, doing business as Power Line Supply Company, and Wysecom Technologies Incorporated in amount not to exceed $500,000 for the Electric Transmission Distribution Operations Department for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second. Motion in a second for consent. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
2023-187, an ordinance accepting-
Alderman Hanauer.
Real quick, I believe that, yeah, Aaron Connolly is not able to hear only Mr. Lesko, so I don't know what's going on.
We'll check it out. Okay, if you have somebody check that out, that's okay. Mr. Clerk.
All right. 2023-187, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UE 24-03-13 Municipal Center East and Municipal Center West switch upgrades with Sentinel Technologies Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $95,953.60 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Consent, second.
Motion in a second for consent. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
2023-188, an ordinance approving a professional services agreement with Cofergeon Incorporated in an amount not to exceed $32,641 for consulting services associated with the upgrade to the VMware clusters for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
Motion in a second for consent. Any discussion? Any questions? Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
2023-189, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a one-year annual renewal of maintenance support for VMware site recovery manager software VMware VSphere for a one-year term with zones incorporated from a state contract in the amount not to exceed $54,566.60 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Consent.
Second.
Motion in a second for the consent agenda. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
2023-190, an ordinance approving and authorizing execution of an agreement with CRM USA Incorporated in amount not to exceed $431,000 for catalyst regeneration for Dolman Unit Four for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Motion in a second for the consent agenda. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
2023-191, an ordinance approving and authorizing execution of a lease agreement for 7350 Lake Services Road Rochester, Illinois, Site Number 56 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Second.
Motion in a second for the consent agenda. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
2023-192, an ordinance to authorize and accept Proposal Number UW 23-38 with E.L. Pruitt Company for Morningside Place water main replacement in an amount not to exceed $585,696 for the Office of Public Utilities.
Move for consent.
Motion in a second for the consent agenda. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
Public Works, 2023-193, an ordinance approving the location sketch map of Centennial Park Place for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent. Second.
Motion in a second for the consent agenda. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
2023-194, an ordinance regarding the variance request of Section 153.157-L pertaining to the restriction of access to the Arterial Street for Centennial Park Place subdivision for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent. Second.
Motion in a second for the consent agenda. Any discussion? Any questions? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
2023-195, an ordinance regarding the variance request of Section 153.158-B2 pertaining to access a public street for Centennial Park Place subdivision for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
Motion in a second for the consent agenda. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
2023-196, an ordinance approving the location and sketch map of RSBR Ridge Avenue for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent. Second.
Motion in a second for the consent agenda. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
2023-197, an ordinance regarding the variance request of Section 153.157-L pertaining to the restriction of access to an Arterial Street for the RSBR Ridge Avenue for the Office of Public Works.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Motion in a second for the consent agenda. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
2023-208, an ordinance authorizing a contract with David L. Brun and Cheryl K. Brun for the purchase of Right Away located at 1404 East North Grand Avenue in an amount of $35,500 and closing costs in the amount of $1,500 for a total amount not to exceed $37,000 relating to the Springfield Rail Improvement Project usable segment 6A for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
Motion in a second for the consent agenda. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
2023-209, an ordinance authorizing a contract with Cheryl K. Brun, FKA Cheryl K. Rowland for the purchase of Right Away located at 1340 East North Grand Avenue in an amount of $37,500 and closing costs in the amount of $1,500 for a total amount not to exceed $39,000 relating to the Springfield Rail Improvement Project usable segment 6A for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Second.
Motion in a second for the consent agenda. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
2023-210, an ordinance authorizing execution of professional services agreement with Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly Incorporated for the design and new streets and traffic facility, landscape and compost facility, and salt dome in an amount not to exceed $1,250,000 for the Office of Public Works.
Move for consent.
Motion in a second. Is there a second? Motion in a second. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
General City Business, 2023-198, an ordinance authorizing increase in the number of Class B local licenses by one for Neiman Foods Incorporated doing business as Save-A-Lot 495 located at 2520 East Clear Lake Avenue.
Move for debate.
Second.
Motion in a second for the debate agenda. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the debate agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
2023-199, an ordinance to increase the number of Class D local licenses by one for Scoville LLC doing business as Jalassa located at 3114 South Sixth Street.
Motion for debate. Second.
Motion in a second for the debate agenda. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
2023-200, an ordinance to increase the number of Class D local licenses by one from Yummy Bowl Springfield, Illinois LLC doing business Yummy Bowl located at 3434 Freedom Drive.
There a motion?
Move for consent. Second. Or wait, yeah, I guess move for consent. Second.
Motion in a second for the consent agenda. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Yummy. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
2023-201, an ordinance amending Chapter 30 by adding Section 30.11 to the 1988 Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended relating to disclosures required of all city officials.
Move to table.
Motion to table? Is there a second?
Second.
Motion in a second to table.
Point of information, Chair.
My understanding, Mr. Ron, the motion to table is non-debatable. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so.
Point of information, Corporation Counsel, how do we determine that? Who called the first? Does a motion to table trump debates? Yeah. Thank you. Appreciate it. So, we moved to debate, and he didn't come and say move to table.
Well, the motion was clear to the table. It's non-debatable.
No, no, I'm asking a question to the Corporate Counsel that if we both said at the same time, us two over here said move to debate, he said move to table. How do you determine that?
It's at the Chair's discretion. I guess he was closer, so I heard him first. Mr. Ron, since it's non-debatable, we're required to take a vote, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, nay.
Nay.
Roll call.
Alderman Redpath.
Aye.
Alderman Gregory.
Nay.
Alderman Williams.
Nay.
Alderman Rockford.
Aye.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Aye.
Alderwoman Notariano. Alderman Carlson.
Aye.
Alderwoman Connolly.
Yes.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Aye.
Eight ayes and two nays.
Eight ayes, two nays. The motion is to table.
Mr. Chairman, point of order.
Mr. Redpath.
Corporation Counsel, at any time that the motion for tabling is called, even if the motion was first, anytime the motion for debate is called, for tabling is called, that trumps any other motion. Is that correct?
That's my understanding, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, moving right along. Mr. Clerk.
2023-202, an ordinance amending Chapter 110, Section 110.071-G of the 1988 City Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended relating to video gaming terminals.
Move for debate.
Is there a second? Move to table.
Second.
Motion in a second to table. Mr. Clerk, we might as well call the roll.
Alderman Redpath.
Aye.
Alderman Gregory.
Nay.
Alderman Williams.
Nay.
Alderman Rockford.
Aye.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Aye.
Alderwoman Notariano.
Aye.
Alderman Carlson.
Aye.
Alderwoman Connolly.
Aye.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Aye.
Eight ayes and two nays. Chairman.
Motion table prevails. Mr. Clerk.
2023-203, an ordinance amending Chapter 170 by adding Sections 170.17.71 through 170.17.78 to the 1988 City Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended relating to registration of residential rental properties.
Move to table.
Motion in a second to table. Roll call. Who was the second there? Thanks. Roll call vote, Mr. Clerk.
Roll call. Alderman Redpath.
Aye.
Alderman Gregory.
Nay.
Alderman Williams.
Nay.
Alderman Rockford.
Nay.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Aye.
Alderwoman Notariano.
Nay.
Alderman Carlson.
Aye.
Alderwoman Connolly.
Aye.
Alderman Donlin.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer. Six ayes and four nays.
Motion prevails. Mr. Clerk.
2023-204, an ordinance authorizing acceptance and execution of Route 66 Grant Program Number 2758-2453 from the State of Illinois Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity in the amount of $623,000 to be used for funding three attraction projects on the Route 66 and authorizing a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $623,000 for the Springfield Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Move for debate. Motion to table.
The motion has been made to table. I understand, Mr. Ron, for clarification, as Mr. Redpath asked earlier, since someone made the motion to table, that prevails the debate. Is that correct?
Correct.
That has to be voted on first.
Okay, is there a second to table?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second to table. Might as well take a roll call vote, Mr. Clerk.
Alderman Redpath.
No.
Alderman Gregory.
Yes.
Alderman Williams.
Yes.
Alderman Rockford.
Hey.
Alderwoman Purchase.
No.
Alderwoman Notariano.
No.
Alderman Carlson.
Uh, no.
Alderwoman Connolly.
No.
Alderman Donlin.
No.
Alderman Hanauer.
Nope.
Motion to table fails.
Eight nos and two yeses.
Motion for debate.
Motion for debate. Is there a second? Motion and a second for the debate agenda. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
2023-205, a resolution adopting a pledge of civility.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Motion and a second for the consent agenda. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
2023-211, an ordinance to increase the number of Class AA local licenses by one for Count's Hospitality Group Incorporated doing business as Trish and Mary's Pub for the business located at 107 West Cook Street.
Move for consent. Second.
Motion and a second for the consent agenda. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. The ayes have it.
2023-212, an ordinance authorizing various interagency budgetary transfers to reconcile end-of-year budget levels with FY 2023 expenses for the Department of Budget and Management.
Move for debate.
Second.
Motion and a second for the debate agenda. Any discussion? Alderman Hanauer.
I guess I got a question for, on this one, in 213. I reached out to you today and asked if you could kind of clarify, you know, what these do and if it's just routine or what.
They're both routine. 212 is the transfers amendment. There's no fiscal impact to fund balance. It's just an annual routine ordinance. It reconciles the budget authority by line in order to cover expenses. And 213, it is also routine. It's an annual supplemental cleanup ordinance, and there is no corporate fund balance effect. The effects are on the fleet fund, and that is due to automobile parts. There were inflationary costs and engine costs and dump truck beds that were purchased. And then Fund 41, it's the biggest one. It's over $4 million, and that has to do with site improvements related to the railroad consolidation. And those are timing invoices that are paid in '24 that were moved back to fiscal year '23. That caused over budget in that site improvement line. Fund 65 is unemployment compensation, and we do not pay unemployment insurance. We're self-insured. We pay actual invoices from the State of Illinois from IDES, and we were over $8,355. Fund 78, the revenue comes in, that's flexible spending. The revenue comes in from contributions from employee payroll. And this $508,510 expenditures is an annual recording of the employees' medical expenses that are valid for the plan, qualifying for the plan.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay. You're welcome.
Alderman Redpath.
So, this was already appropriated in the budget, correct?
No. This is a supplemental.
And we're pulling this out of the fund balance?
Not out of corporate fund. It does not have any corporate fund effect. It's individual funds. Like Fund 78, the revenue is already there. This is recording the expense associated with that revenue, the $508,000. It is a line that is not budgeted, and so we do this every year for Fund 78, which is